All right, everyone. Of course. Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, January 7th, 7:06 PM. We are live in the City Council chambers. This meeting is being recorded on public access and on Zoom and through the city's livestream, and it is being live translated. So thank you to our friends at Hoyoke Media for helping with that. And the clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Graney?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Here.
Ocasio?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started and head into the logistics of everything this evening, I would like to pause for a moment of silence. Specifically, I was coming up here to have a moment of silence for Maurice Fariter. He passed away on Christmas Eve, just as he planned. And he was a great Hoyoke resident, a great advocate for our city, a former city solicitor. And I got to know him on the Prey Committee. So we, his services were over the weekend, and it was a beautiful celebration of life. He lived to the ripe age of 94. So just a moment of silence for him. And Dave, did you have someone to add on the moment of silence?
Danny Bressenhans mom.
Danny Bressenhans mom. And Counselor Simon.
Former President Jimmy Carter.
Absolutely, of course. A moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. And before we get into anything else, we do have folks who are on Zoom this evening. So I would entertain a motion to take a roll call vote that for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to receive, to refer items to committee, remove items from the table, place items on the table, package items together, comply with items, or suspend the rules unless there is an objection.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we do a roll call for that? The clerk will call the roll.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We don't have any public hearings this evening, but we do have public comment. And on the list, signed up in person, I have Rory Casey. And just a reminder for folks who are listening and speaking during public comment tonight, you have two minutes. And I will keep track of time and give you a heads up when you are coming to your time. And just make sure you state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Rory Casey, City Treasurer, Leaven Dexter Street in Hoyoke. I'm coming to you this evening to speak specifically on Item 96, which was filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, which is seeking the council to endorse the ballot question, which would change the treasurer's position from being elected to appointed. That question is gonna be on a special election in three weeks from tonight, which is not much time. This council did, worked as fast as it could, and I appreciate all of your hard work. And then getting it to the legislature, I know that they worked as fast as they could, and the governor was only able to sign that into law to allow for this special election a few weeks back. I want to give a special thanks to our city clerk who helped navigate this entire process and had the foresight to put some language, just alerting the public that this question was even going to be on a ballot, that there'd be a special election in January, on Tuesday, January 28th. And she put that on the census forms. And I know I've gotten a lot of questions about it just from those census forms. So that's good. That means the word is out there. Tonight, in front of the council, is a letter of support. I would urge that you pass that this evening and not wait for another meeting so that the public knows
Thirty seconds.
that the council supports this. And 2015 was the last time that this question was on the ballot. It failed narrowly. One of the reasons that it failed so narrowly was the sitting treasurer opposed it. I am the sitting treasurer. I fully endorse this question. This is something that's been a long time coming, and it will be the first step in many steps to really get the city's financial house in order. So with that, I ask that you please endorse Question 96 this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, if you haven't noticed, I'm missing my wingman here, Jeffrey, who is on Zoom. So I appreciate your patience in advance while I do 42 things up here on the podium, all at once. I do not see anyone on Zoom who is here for public comment. So we will move.
My President, I'll make a motion to take 96 out of order.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to take Item 96 out of order. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. And I will read that into the record. So Item 96 was filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, ordered that the attached letter, titled "An Open Letter to the Public Regarding the Upcoming Special Election" on January 28th, 2025, be approved by the City Council and Mayor for public distribution. Counselor McGrath Smith?
Thank you. I created this order based on feedback that I'd gotten from different folks as I'd reached out to them. And it was suggested in full council that someone draft a letter. And so I offered to do so. And I ran it by a number of people to get their feedback and made those adjustments. I'm hoping that this letter is satisfactory and is something that we can all get behind. I focused on it being short, to the point, and, you know, above board, as neutral as possible. Here are the reasons why we're asking for this. We think it's a good idea. And I hope that we can approve it tonight and get it out there for distribution.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, I think this is a good order by Counselor McGrath Smith. In addition to that, the city clerk did put something on the census. And I did make a copy of that small portion and also a copy of the mayor's the mayor's announcement. And he'll also be doing that with the city, the city president, and I believe the treasurer, on the 9th, at Hoyoke Media. So I think it's a good idea to get the word out.
Thank you, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Madam President. With the indulgence of the council, if we could also take Item 103 out of order with the resolution. That's my order that we send to ordinance to create minimum eligibility for the position. Because we're telling the public that if they do endorse this idea, that we will have minimum qualifications. And this would start the process should the voters decide to approve it.
Okay. So that was, was that a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
To take it up as a package.
Okay, so the motion was made to take Item 103 as a package with Item 96? Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
So I'll make a motion that we, well.
Counselor Bartley?
I'll make a motion that we receive and endorse Number 96. And then I'll make a motion that we receive and refer Number 103 to ordinance and HR.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to receive and endorse Item 96 and receive and refer to ordinance committee, Item 103, under discussion. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, also to refer to the mayor, the 103.
Okay.
So I'm moved.
All right, so Counselor Graney?
Yeah, why can't they be packaged together so that the public gets the whole story?
So I think just for, if I may, for clarification purposes, and others can chime in. The two orders, one would actually be sent to ordinance to make it an actual ordinance that we mentioned that things are gonna be qualified. This, the Item 96, is an actual, just open letter that covers the actual special election. So kind of two different, we could include this. Obviously, this is an order that we would be discussing. But they kind of, they sort of go hand in hand. But one would need to go to actually ordinance committee.
And the other one would go on the website, correct?
Immediately.
Yeah, we could, we could put that right up on the website.
Yeah.
I still question whether this is an attempt to influence the public of how they're gonna vote on this issue.
Okay.
If the council takes us, you know, if the council is putting out a letter to indicate to the public how the preference is or whatever, if there's a preference there with this letter or not, to vote or not to vote for this issue, I kind of have a problem with that.
Sure, okay, thank you. Counselor McGrath Smith, you hold your hand up.
The goal here is to help to get the word out to the public, even though the election is occurring, for sure. It's a special election. It's in January. It's an odd time for a special election. So a lot of it is really focused on that. And also unanimously, this body approved this change. As a whole, we wanted this to occur. And so, while I know in some cases it's been very important for council to not take a position in this case, I feel like it makes sense for us to do so, to take a position. And the goal would be to send this to, to put on our website and also to get it out to the local papers, the Reminder, the Sun, the Gazette, the Republican, and try to get the word out as much as possible.
Thank you. Anyone else? Making sure I'm not missing my friends on Zoom? Okay. So the motion on the floor was to refer 103 to the mayor and the ordinance committee. And 96 is to receive and endorse.
Also to Human Resources, the item number 103, I think.
Okay. All right, so on that, those two motions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so the ayes have it. Thank you. All right. So going back to the regular.
Want to take Item 1 up?
Yes. So Item 1 is from Mayor Garcia. It's a letter appointing Mr. Joseph Black of 1015 Maple Street to serve as a member of the Recycling Advisory Committee.
Public service?
Be received and sent to public service?
Sent to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I forgot to mention, we pulled the name, and tonight Counselor Graney is voting first, so, sorry. I have so many papers up here. I apologize. All right. Item number 2 is from the city clerk and our administrative assistant. It's the minutes from the December 17th meeting.
Motion received.
Accept and receive.
Motion to receive, accept and receive. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 3 is from OPED Director Aaron Vega about Open Square and H-Dip.
Motion received.
Motion to receive?
Madam President?
Yes, under discussion.
If I might, I didn't think of it earlier until I saw this. We should also do a moment of silence for John Aubin, who really was the creator of Open Square.
Absolutely.
So motion of silence for John Aubin, former owner of Open Square, who passed away recently.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 4 is the fiscal year 25 budget versus actual general fund and sewer.
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we take 5 and 6 together? Oh, actually, 5, 6, and 7 together.
Sure.
They're just motions to receive.
So motion to suspend the rules and take Items 5, 6, and 7 as a package. Item 5 and 6 are grant completion forms, one for the municipal road safety grant program and the state 911 department training grant program. 7 is the Board of Fire Commissioners Meeting. Motion to receive. All those in favor? Under discussion. Counselor Bartley?
Right, I just, on 5 and 6, just through the chair to Jeff. Jeff?
Hi, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, just on these, you have them on the, I know they're on the city council packet. Is there any way to take the grant completion and create a, kind of a new folder for all the grant completion items? Is that, is that possible?
Sure, I can do that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That's, if you would, when you have, I know you don't have time, but when you get time at some point, maybe this summer. Just have it be a summer project. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Great idea.
Okay.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 8 is from Andrea Johansson, a letter regarding proposed lithium battery site in Westfield.
Be received?
And sent to public safety.
Receive and send to public safety? All those in, oh, Counselor Bacon?
Just briefly, there's pretty universal opposition to this in Westfield. And the lead person against it is a council over there that I know. So I think it's a pretty safe thing. But I thought if we put it in public safety, we can track it because it's gonna be right on our border.
Okay.
If it happens. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right.
I'll second the motion.
So on the motion to receive and send to public safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor Givner and Counselor Jordan, do we have your permission to sign off the items that were here out of committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't think I had any for Counselor Anderson Burgos, so. Okay, so Item, nope. Before I go into committees, I'm gonna do the President's report. Sorry. I just have a couple updates for you all. So one of the things that I just needed to announce as part of adhering to open meeting law is that there was a request to the exemption of the city ordinance for the time of public meetings. This was for the Tourism Advisory Committee. We've done this before. They usually have to have their meetings around 4 o'clock to accommodate the folks that are on the committee. So just, I'm informing you all that their next meeting is January 21st at 4:00 PM. And that is with the Office of Planning and Economic Development. So just adhering to that. And the other thing, just wanted to congratulate our new police chief. We had our, the swearing-in ceremony was this morning. It was a great ceremony, very well attended. And thank you to all the counselors that were able to be there in person in the middle of the day. I know we, most of us have full-time jobs, so thank you very much for being there. And we had, over the holiday break, I hope everyone had a great holiday and a very Happy New Year. Over the break, we had the, both the Kwanzaa ceremony and our very own Counselor Cocaine Givner was honored with an award for her efforts in the community. And it was a really nice ceremony. So congratulations, Coco. Thank you for all that you do. And we also had the menorah lighting. It was just a lot of great community events. So I hope everyone enjoyed themselves. And then, yeah, in case you're just tuning in right now, I just want to remind everyone about the special election on January 28th. And there is a press conference this Thursday just to sort of give the public an overview of what's being asked and just trying to get the word out there that an election is happening on the 28th. Is there anything else anyone needs to add? Okay, thanks. That's my President's report. So now we will head into the reports of committees. Let me grab. So Item number 9 is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that there be a transfer of $33,000 as follows, from a pace engineer, civil engineer, to professional engineering services. Recommend that the order be adopted. The motion would be to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Counselor Devine?
Yes, this was the, a routine transfer that we've been doing for several months. But the good news is, is that the city has hired a engineer, a city engineer, and he is, may not be new to many of us, Matt Sokoff. And so he's, he's gonna know what he's doing, coming right in. And Victoria will be staying on for a little while just to, you know, go through the routines with him. So it's a, it's a good thing, very good.
Do other counselors, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I know we don't have a vote on that, but Matt was here for, I think, my first three terms. He's already a city resident, so we don't have to worry about that part. And he's, in my opinion, was a real asset to the city. So I'm grateful that he's coming back and welcome his return.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McGrath Smith?
Thank you. So just for the record, in terms of this process, it's taken a long time for us to be able to hire an engineer. I'm very grateful that Mr. Sokoff has stepped forward and is coming back. But so far this year, we've transferred a number of times, 33,000 twice, 5,000 once, 12,125, and then tonight, 33. So it's a total of $116,000. So just to get a sense of how much we've had to transfer in order to cover this, you know, gap that we've had, just wanted to read it into the record in totality because it's sort of been drips and drabs along the way. So very grateful that we're gonna have an engineer, and I hope that means that we'll also have a civil engineer as well to complete the tomb, the team.
Counselor Graney?
Like to move the question, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So on the motion, the.
Motion to pass the second reading. We did that.
Okay, wait, so we didn't pass the first reading yet. So the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to pass the second reading? See, clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of this transfer.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yeah.
12 years, one name.
With that, you've passed it. Okay, Item 10 is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order for a transfer of $20,000 from firefighters to R&amp;M vehicles. The motion would be to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, we have the fire chief into Finance Committee. And what this is, it's a, it's a fairly costly repair for one of the engines. So that's why the transfer of $20,000.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, so the motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the transfer.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. With that, you've passed it. Item 11 was, is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order for a transfer of $250,000 from firefighters to overtime. Recommended that the order be adopted. Movements are received.
Even pass the first reading?
Second.
Counselor Devine?
Yeah, this, again, we have the fire chief in. And he, there were some positions that weren't filled, so that's why he had to use other firefighters for overtime. And he believes that this should take him to the end of fiscal 2025.
Anyone else? Counselor Graney?
These are contractual obligations, correct?
Well, it's overtime, yes.
Anyone else? Okay, so the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the transfer.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.[1559.28]
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
That you've passed it. Item 12 is the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that the City Council hereby accept the provisions of the BJA F Fiscal Year 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. $35,099, no match. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Devine?
Motion to pass the first reading? Or do we, no, we don't need to do that. I can talk, talk about this with, we have Sergeant Zer Hyde come in and he's, he's really terrific with grants for the police department. This particular one is for equipment purposes in three main areas. The records department in need of new furniture, new desks, that type of thing. The other one is to, new radios. And the third one is to change the records overs, the record systems to an internet system. In case the power goes out, it will automatically run on the cell. So for that, he, he did a great job with a small amount of money, but he's doing a great thing.
Thank you.
And that was a five to nothing vote.
Okay, is there any other comments? All right, so the recommendations that the order be adopted. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to accept the grant, the grant.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
That you have passed it. Okay. Item 13 is the Committee on Finance to whom was referred...
Madam President?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Is grants to reading?
No.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
That's okay. Item 13 is a transfer request of $21,843.57 from pay administrative assistant to revenue collections. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Devine?
Yep, this, the tax collector was in on Zoom. And basically what this is, it's all, it's not hiring a new person. It's upgrading the position based on the new requirements with the handling of a large amount of money. And it's less than $1,300 over the course of the year. And it's just, I, I give the tax collector credit for seeing the position has to be filled. There's no retro. And obviously the person's doing a great job, so she was able to upgrade that to a pay revenue collections person specialist.
Thank you.
And that was a five to nothing vote as well.
Was that a motion to pass the first reading perhaps?
Oh, I'm sorry, pass the first reading.
Movements were made and seconded to pass the first reading. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of this transfer.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor.
If we could take out of the jacket, on the Finance Committee, when we met, was item number eight. And that was for the capital, capital stabilization of 30,000 to the War Memorial. We had tabled that, but I have the information that we probably need to, to vote on that tonight.
Hold on.
Yeah, you, it's not on the agenda. We have to take it out of Finance.
I would need the actual, the...
Wording?
The, the order itself. I...
Again, it's...
Okay.
Well, just a point of order?
Yeah, Counselor Bartley?
Is this, this sort of chair to chair, is this a dire emergency, Patty?
Well...
When's your next meeting?
It's, it's to repair some things in the War Memorial. And I suppose it could wait till our next meeting, our next City Council meeting.
Okay, I mean...
Yeah, and again, I didn't let Jeff know that I was gonna be taking this up, so.
Okay.
It can wait till the next City Council.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that, guys.
Nope, it's okay.
So item 14. Right, that's where we were, yeah. Item 14 is the Committee on Finance to whom was referred a transfer request of $2,066.40 from professional office supplies to telephone usage charges. Recommended that the order is adopted, so motion would be to receive, adopt and pass the first reading. Counselor Devine?
Yes, this is from the Building Department, the Leslie Ward. They, apparently the Building Inspectors and the Office of Community Development, especially the Building Inspectors, are using their own phones to do their inspections. So this isn't the ability to have them, the building would, Building Department would have seven phones and the Office of Community Development would have three phones. And that way they're no longer using their own phones, which I think is, is a good idea because they will get mixed up with their personal things. So this way, we're able to obtain that for a good price. And there's no material cost, just a monthly fee.
Is there any other discussion? All right, so the motion was to pass the first, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Greeney?
Just quickly, isn't there a legal problem with people using their personal phones for public business?
I'm sorry, can you say that?
Isn't there a legal problem with people using their personal phones for public business?
I have no idea.
I don't know.
But apparently they've been doing it, so it must be okay for them to do it. Or they would have not done it.
Just asking.
Okay. Anyone else?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Uh, so hold on, we haven't passed the first reading. Movements to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there a motion to pass the second reading?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Uh, the clerk, motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the transfer.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
That you have passed that order. Item 15 is the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that there be a transfer of $7,712 from TNC Ride Share to contracted services planning. Recommended that the order be adopted. Motion would be to receive, adopt and pass the first reading. Counselor Devine?
Yep, this is a annual appropriations for the bike share. Valley Bike is the new vendor. And I think we all know about the bikes in the city that are a great asset to the people of Hoyoke and they're used regularly. This was launched, this new vendor was launched on August 12, 2024. And there's 10 municipalities and including UMass that use this bike share program. And this should be gone through from February, fiscal year 24 to fiscal year 26. And that was voted five to nothing.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so the motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Uh, motions been made and seconded to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the transfer.
Greeney?
No.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Okay, with that, you've passed that transfer request. Item 16
Would I make a friendly suggestion, Madam President?
Yes, Counselor. Counselor Jordane?
Um, recommendation, we have two contracts. We're about to vote on the appropriation for it. 16, 17, and 18, I recommend we have, we treat those as a package. And then 19, 20, and 21 as a package. I'd like to move to have those as two separate packages and votes, like two separate contracts needing our vote for appropriation.
Second. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rolls and take items 16, 17, and 18 together as a package. I'll do the next ones after that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So I'll just read them into the record. 16 is a transfer request from Finance for $12,264.44 from professional accountant HPD to nutrition director, utility person, social work, health services provider, driver, council on aging MOA. Total is $12,264.44. Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Devine?
Yes, we had this, this was also in the Finance Committee. And I, I just wanna, you had read the nutrition director, utility person, social work. These are all from the Council on Aging. We didn't have a lot of questions, but I was concerned because, and I'm gonna say it out front, we have to realize as city counselors, we do not negotiate contracts. We never have and hopefully we never will. All we're supposed to do is approve the appropriations. And in this particular one, there was retroactivity for the wages, but yet in the contracts that are coming up, certain counselors didn't like retroactivity. So for Council on Aging, retro seems okay. But for the other ones, the professional union now, it's no longer an association, it's a union. That was, that was defeated, three to two. But I wanted to just mention that I, I'm thrilled that the Council on Aging are getting a well-deserved raise. And I'll talk more about the professional union when we get to that.
Thank you.
And that was a five to nothing vote.
Okay, is there any other comments? I'm not seeing any. All right, so the motion?
To...
Is it to pass the first reading?
Yep.
So the motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There a motion to pass the second reading?
Vote, sorry, motion to pass second reading.
So motions to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to approve the transfer. And the 6, 17, and 18, are we gonna take separate votes on that? What does the body want to do?
I'd make a motion that we take one vote.
Altogether, okay. So the clerk will call the roll.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledy?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you have passed it. Let me just... So the next, the motion was to take, suspend the rolls and take items 19...
20 and 21.
20 and 21 together as a package. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass.
Uh, let me just, I'm gonna read them into the record.
Okay.
Briefly. Okay, so item 19 is the Committee on Finance who was referred a transfer request of $48,826.15 from the mayor's contract negotiations, the CAFO, Veterans Pay Investigator, Veterans Pay Commissioner, Veterans Vacation Buyback, Veterans Sick Leave Buyback Pay Personnel Assistant to and Assistant Building Commissioner, Chief Inspector of Wires, Zoning Official, Assistant Director of Planning, Assistant Director of Economic Development, Senior Project Manager, Planner One, Sealer of Weights and Measures, Conservation Sustainability Director, Safety Officer, Assistant Director COA, Director of Council on Aging, National Service Officer, Director of Parks and Rec, Forestry, Director of Board of Health, Animal Control Officer, Director of Wisteria, City Historian, Director of Parks and Rec. Recommended that the order be denied. Counselor Devine?
That was a three to two vote to deny it.
Uh, I'm sorry, can I just, actually, my bad. Can I just read the other two orders?
Oh, sure.
My bad. 20 is the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order, the settlement agreement between the City of Hoyoke and the Hoyoke Professional Supervisors Association. Recommended that the order be denied. And 21 is the Red Lines Settlement Agreement between the City of Hoyoke and Professional Supervisors Association. Recommended that the order be denied. Counselor Devine first, and then Counselor Bartley?
I'd like to, it was a three to two vote to deny some of these good people out in the audience their contracted raises. This was a contract that was negotiated. This was a contract that was ratified by the union. And like I said, it is a union right now. It's no longer an association. And I know a lot of people were always questioning how that became an association. Well, now they don't have to question it. It's a union. And I think it's important to know that the three people, I don't wanna embarrass them, I'm just telling the facts. There were three people that voted against the, this contract. And that was Ocasio, Sullivan, and Jordane. And I know that the president has already read who these go to. But one of the things I heard in, in Finance Committee was that these were for department heads. And I wanna know that they're not all department heads. And there was a big to-do about flex time. And flex time is something that a department head can give somebody who may have to come to a meeting or work late at night. And it cannot be unreasonably denied. So I think that's important. And I, again, I don't wanna repeat it after we've already done it. But we have Veterans Pay Investigator. People, this is a veteran who is working for the veterans. You're denying him the raise. Veterans Pay Commissioner, denying that raise. Veterans Vacation Buyback, denying that. Veterans Sick Leave Buyback. Personnel Assistant, okay, that's not a department head. Assistant Building Commissioner, not a department head. Chief Inspector of Wires, Zoning Official, Assistant Director of Planning, not a department head. Assistant Director of Economic Development, not a department head. Senior Project Manager, Planner One, Sealer of Weights and Measures, Conservation and Sustainability Director, Director, Safety Officer, Assistant Director Council on Aging, Director Council on Aging, National Service Advisor, Officer, Director of Parks and Rec, Forestry, Board of Health, Animal Control Officer, Director of Wisteria, City Historian, and Assistant Director of Parks and Rec. So I wanted people to know that these are not all department heads. They certainly have earned their money. And I would ask that if they will, the three people that denied this, these motions, that they would explain what, why their denial was. And that would be Counselor Ocasio, Counselor Sullivan, and Counselor Jordane. However you wanna take that up, if you wanna take it up.
Thank you. I have Counselor Bartley and then Counselor Jordane on Zoom.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be very brief, but it just, just, I don't know if this is in point of order, Madam President, but it, it would be before a chair goes into the whys and wherefore's, which we just heard, which is fine. It would just help me as a counselor to, they should say, what's your motion? Is the motion to deny the committee report? Is your motion to support the committee? I hear that so many times from chairs now, and I, I get lost with this stuff. I mean, it's nice to go into the committee report, but you, you gotta tee it off with a motion. That's, that's how this thing works. And since the, since the, you know, and I'm sure Kevin will speak for himself, I, I just find it, you know, not being critical or mean, but our rules are pretty clear. We're really not supposed to be naming by names. That's, that's, that's two. And then in my career, whatever, take it or leave it, but, you know, counselors vote the way they vote in committee and in city council. I've been here, I can't count how many times present counselors have voted one way in committee and another way in city council. And then because it's tabled, they've switched their vote yet again. But I don't go on the microphone, and I've never, I've rarely ever heard a counselor go on the microphone saying, "Explain your vote." I, I don't think that's the best way to go about presenting an argument. In fact, I think it's kinda contrary to our rules. So it, it just, just thoughts that you want. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and I would, I see you...
You want to make a motion to adopt the committee report?
Second.
Okay, so the motion, the motion was made and seconded to adopt the committee report.
Roll call?
Wait, hold on, I'm not done with, we're not done with discussion. We're following the rules and...
Sorry.
No, it's okay. I also would have noted that there wasn't actually a motion made yet. So thank you, Counselor, for helping me out there. So so the motion was to adopt. Now I had, Counselor Bartley, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I'm, I'm, I got my cookie.
Um, Counselor Jordane?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I appreciate everything Counselor Bartley just said, but in fairness to Counselor Devine, I don't think she did anything offensive at all. She stated what our votes were, and if anybody listened to our discussion in Finance, I thought we had a very thoughtful discussion. I thought I enumerated the numerous reasons why this is not in the city's best interest and that we should not appropriate this contract. I'm just gonna go over a number of the reasons why, so that for those that didn't have the benefit of seeing this in Finance, they have the benefit of that information now. It should be noted that there are eight department heads in this union or association.[1658.83] It's the only, to my knowledge, agreement where we actually have the people supervising the other people in the same union in the City of Holyoke. It's very unusual that we would have that type of situation, and that really should not be allowed to occur. But nevertheless, that's outside my control. Um, so they're lumped in with eight department heads. Uh, having said that, some of these things that I'm going to speak to are also inappropriate benefits that they also shouldn't get. I'd like to walk through those now. Number one, we need to be sensitive when we're talking about appropriations of this extensive amount, that taxpayers have just received a record tax increase of 6.2%. Never in Holyoke history has such a large $3.8 million tax increase been doled out. And here we are. And this is why, first of all, this agreement doubles down on the big mistake that this council allowed, to the extent we did allow, I'll speak to that in a minute, a large vacation increase in the vacation ordinance under Section A, where they gave numerous, uh, department heads in other key positions, um, an extra week of vacation pay to everybody. At that vote, we also gave additional personal time from three days to four days. On top of that, created a new rule that allowed the mayor to give an additional two weeks of vacation time to every starting employee if they met very subjective criteria of his satisfaction. All of those are extremely expensive and something this city simply cannot afford to be giving these type of giveaway programs. Um, this contract doubles down on that. I opposed that in 2023. I still maintain that was not even validly approved by this council. Um, I'll double down on that point. Um, having said that, I certainly will not be voting to expand to yet another massive quantity of people all these additional vacation benefits that we cannot afford. It's one thing, you know, that we're giving some reasonable pay increases of two or 3%. That's one thing. I would have no problem voting for that. But these absolute giveaways of vacation time is just outrageous and is something not in keeping with what average citizens of Holyoke are receiving, who are struggling under the weight of these massive tax bills that they're forced to pay. And my constituents are loud and clear to me that they're not okay with that. Moreover, this also creates a new expensive longevity category of pay, a new $500 longevity pay once you're here for five years. Five years, in my opinion, is not considered longevity. This contract is always allowed for a 10-year longevity bonus. It should not be lowered all the way down to five years. Uh, that's just simply unaffordable for the city. Moreover, I continue to emphasize, I'll emphasize it in the last contract, I, I point this out, that we have state laws against retroactivity back to prior fiscal years. Fiscal year 2024 is closed. You cannot use current fiscal year money to pay bills from prior fiscal years. In fact, the legislature even passed a specific law, Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 68, which specifically precludes what the Law Department negotiated here under the aegis of the mayor and apparently has been signed off to as to form by the Law Department, which is to give retroactive pay raises back to July 1st, 2023. The statute is clear. You may not go back to a time period to before the beginning of the fiscal year of when the council takes the vote. That would be July 1st, 2024. That's it. Now, in order to compensate for that, what has been done in the past is more of the money is backloaded for the later years to get around the statute. But here, they don't even make any pretense about it. They just put it right in there. We're paying you back to 7/1, 2023. I maintain that is not legal. It's plain and simple in the statute. And I, and I point this out yet again in a, in a later city council order. The other thing that I also find problematic here is the flex time. Specifically, I'm less concerned about the non-department heads, but the department heads are here. There's eight department heads. I didn't create this deal. They created them. And they create new language, which is going to be expensive to the City of Holyoke. Number one, it guarantees these department heads now a 35-hour work week. And it says that if they work more than 35 hours in a work week, that their request for flex time is, shall not be unreasonably denied. No past or future mayor should be allowed to be hamstrung by that type of expensive requirement that there has to be the payment of flex time. Their flex time, uh, if you work over 35 as a department head, your management, you should, one, you shouldn't even be in a union. But to the extent this is being allowed, if the mayor needs you for 40 hours this week, you're not entitled to automatically five more hours. Um, to create this rule is expensive to the taxpayers. And now the mayor is going to have to pay an additional five hours if you work over or give you five hours the next week. This has been silent historically back to, I want to say, 30 years of this contract. And so they've had arrangements, but there's never been automatic entitlement to a 35-hour work week with flex time. And I don't think that is in the best interest of past, present, or future mayors to hamstring them in that way. And that is just opening a can of expensive worms for our past and future mayors. So this contract is a total and complete giveaway. It is not in the best interests of taxpayers. It's more money and a whole lot less work. And as a result, it's just completely tone deaf while we're doling out massive tax increases, just crushing tax increases on the public. I, I simply will not vote for that. I think it's, as I stated, tone deaf. And I think the council should vote it down.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a few folks in the queue. I have Counselor Givner and then Sullivan and Devine. Counselor Givner.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just wanted to touch on some things I noticed. Um, I'm under the impression that this new contract isn't really that new. Uh, it's a three-year contract. We're a year and a half into it. Um, so it's a little, I feel like it's a little, it's hard to make these arguments when we're not really at the table or part of these contact, contract negotiations. Although I do, you know, I, I hear what Counselor Jordane is saying and, and, you know, I, I don't agree with everything, but, um, some things I do agree with. And I do think it's unfortunate that we're, you know, that we're trying to debate this as if, as if we have any say in contract negotiations. Um, there's, it's my understanding that the, what was newly negotiated, you know, is like you said, um, the longevity bonus, uh, flex time, and the additional week paid vacation. Um, that, also that additional personal and sick day, um, and some performance-based evaluations and streamlining those so that people can depend on raises. Um, one of the things I did know is that, you know, there's been vacation buybacks that, that would far exceed the amount, uh, the city pays out instead of, you know, giving people that extra week of paid vacation. So, um, not only do we really need to promote people taking their vacation, but, um, it's my understanding that this, this added week vacation is a substitute in order to get rid of the, the vacation buybacks. So, you know, some people might have been buying back, you know, all of their two, three, four weeks vacation at the end of the year, um, but this would stop that. So I think that is actually a big money savings to the city. Um, and also, you know, I, I don't understand why we're treating this so differently than the other contract. I think, you know, it's, it's, it's labor's right to negotiate, you know, through their union with the city, and they've done what they were supposed to do. Um, so to say that we're not going to pay retro for a contract that, you know, essentially has been in negotiation for a year and a half, it, it just seems, it seems like a waste of everyone's time. Um, and I, I just think it's kind of short-sighted. We, and once again, we're, we're trying to fix things backwards instead of forwards, you know? Um, a lot of people spent a lot of time, you know, there were 16 two-hour sessions of meetings to get the union, you know, to ratify the vote on this negotiation. So, um, I think by saying that, you know, we don't agree with this, number one, I don't think it's our place to agree or disagree with this. We're not here to negotiate or debate this. Um, but also, you know, saying that we don't agree with it is like saying that your time and your money is not valuable, you know? Um, so on the one hand, we're saying we want to save money. But on the other hand, once again, we're wasting a lot of money with these long-drawn-out uh, viewpoints on things that we really don't have a whole lot of, um, power over. So I would hope that we vote to, you know, accept this. I think there are some good things in here that are getting rid of some, some older bad habits in previous contracts. And I think we should, you know, if we really feel strongly about union negotiations, we should figure out as individuals on the council how we can be more involved in the negotiation when it's happening instead of, you know, once it comes to the table, trying to deny it. So, um, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Um, up next, I have Counselor Sullivan, then Counselor Devine, Anderson Burgos, Bacon, and Grainey. Counselor Sullivan.
Um, first of all, I do take offense at Counselor Devine's portrayal of us, uh, member, other members of the committee as having put this out as simply a matter of denying a group of people a pay raise. Uh, we, we did, as Counselor Jordane pointed out, have a very in-depth discussion of it. There's, there's no question, and I hope everybody in the council understands, we cannot negotiate a contract. All right? We can't. All right? And this is not about denying a pay raise. All of the things that Counselor Jordane brought up are very pertinent concerns of the city, of the citizens, of the taxpayers. All right? And the only tool allowed to this council is to either fund it or not fund it. The only way we can show, or we can't negotiate, we can't do anything else. The only tool we have to show our approval or disapproval is to fund it. So what I'm hearing here is anything that comes to us, we have to approve. Like it or not, approve it. I'm not going to go for that. If, if, the only tool allowed to us is to fund it or not fund it. If you don't like it, if you think that's not a good contract, our only tool is to not fund it and send it back. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Devine?
Yep, to, again, to, I certainly didn't mean to offend anybody, but I do believe that when you're in a committee, that, we don't know how many people watched that meeting, finance meeting, but it was a three-to-vote, three-to-vote to deny. And I think I have a right to say who denied and who approved. And I, I said who the denials were and the approvals were myself and Counselor Givner. And I think one thing we have to remember, we cannot negotiate a contract. We can't talk about union dues, which were talked about in our finance meeting. We can't talk about flex time, which was talked about. We can't talk about vacation time. All we can do is approve the appropriation. The other thing I want to caution you about is, and again, for those of you that don't know my background, for 12 years, I, I was an Assistant Business Manager for the Office and Professional Employees International Union in Boston for 12 years. I think it's important that we remember about the not being able to negotiate a contract. And if you're doubting anything, you need to look up Mass General Laws, Chapter 150E, which is the collective bargaining for public employees statute. Um, we have to be extremely careful. And that's why I really, you know, the three-two denial, um, I'm not sure if I should have done a, a different report or whatever, but I want to make sure that the public, the unions, whomever, know that for my vote, it was in favor of this contract. And I think we have to be extremely careful um, by what we say in the finance meeting, how we quote, "do not negotiate," or we're going to get slapped with an unfair labor practice charge. Um, and I don't want to see that happen. So that's my reasoning as to why I, I do think that when it's a denial, people need to know that it wasn't a five-to-nothing denial, it was a three-to-two denial. So that was my basis, and I certainly meant no disrespect.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Um, I'm sitting here home, listening to everyone make their valid points, and, and I'm trying to make sense of this. The first thing I want to mention is some of the employees under the union contract, I just wanted to make a point of this, are actually also our constituents. So not only are there, are constituents, but these are folks who are also having a hard time making ends meet because, as a counselor just recently mentioned, that the taxpayers in the city, we're all, we're all in the struggle together. That includes these people under this contract, under contract, which are also our constituents. And, you know, it's always easy to see one side when we don't see the struggle on the other. This is before us because we can help aid. We can help them, right? And I, I believe that's how a community comes together, is when we're there for one another and we're listening to each other, but at the same time, not trying to make it uh, difficult for those to make a decent living, um, especially when you're working for a city like Holyoke. I also want to ask, um, through the president to Attorney Besonat, um, just regarding what was mentioned by Counselor Jordane about the retro, if that is correct, the, the law that says back to last fiscal year, fiscal year. I wanted to, through the president, to Attorney Besonat, if he can, um, give us any info on that.
Yeah, good evening. Um, the Law Department's negotiations are usually informed under Chapter 44, um, I believe it's Section 38, that allows the, uh, retroactive pay to go back to the beginning of the prior fiscal year. So once you get into that next fiscal year and it's a recognition of contract negotiations like this one, sometimes get heated and take a little bit longer than others. Um, but in this case, um, it's, it's been, uh, signed off on, the transfer is before you, and the retro date goes back to the beginning of the prior fiscal year. So under, so we make sure I've got it, I'm sorry. It's Chapter 44, Section 68 on retro salary. So I hope that clarifies things, Counselor. Thanks so much.
Thank you, thank you. And my last point I want to make, and I'm not trying to poke or whatever, but I just, I feel the need to, to say this. There was a time, um, not too long ago, I was in a, in a committee, and I voted a certain way. And a counselor that's sitting in the chambers at this very moment questioned my position on my vote and asked me why I voted that way. So to choose and pick when we're going to do this, let's just not do it at all then. Let's, let's not do that to one another at all. But let's not also attack or jump on Counselor Devine when she decides to do it. Because sometimes we need to know if you are voting just to vote for a certain reason, for any reason, any particular reason which doesn't make sense for the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bacon.
So the main point that I wanted to make was not to get into the details of the negotiations. However, I would say this. The only authority that we have are the two orders before us to either accept the contract or not, or, and to agree to spend the money or not. So in this regard, it's like all appropriations that come before us. We just had very robust debate and discussion over appropriations out of the stabilization fund. And this is the same as that. And to Counselor Sullivan's point, it is the only authority that we have. However, having said that, if someone is asked to explain their vote, I don't think they can be gagged from then talking about what's in the contract if what's in the contract is part of the basis of their vote. Because then you're putting a counselor in catch-22. You're asking them, "Why are they voting a certain way?" But then you're saying they can't talk about why they're voting a certain way. So I think while we all acknowledge that we cannot negotiate contracts, um, we do have the ability to talk about a contract because otherwise we can't explain to the public anything that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, I have Counselor Grainey, then Counselor Sullivan, then Counselor Jordane.
Yeah, basically, our function is either transfer the money or not transfer the money at this point. So why don't we just get to it?
Thank you, Counselor Sullivan.
Uh, we just make one last point as we approach a new budget season. Take a good look at where the money's coming from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, just very quickly, Madam President, a couple of points is, the law that the Law Department is citing is the same law I'm citing, and it specifically says we can't do exactly what's happening in this contract. It specifically precludes it, okay? It says, you, the vote prior to the fiscal, the beginning of the fiscal year prior to the vote, the fiscal year started on July 1st, 2024. That's the, that's, today's July, today's January 7th, 2025, okay? Second point, we're not negotiating, when we, first of all, we operate in the Finance Committee, subject to the open meeting law. We don't operate in, in the back rooms. We have to explain our vote and the rationale as to why we're doing it. That's not negotiating with the union. As a matter of fact, I personally do not like the recent practice, mind you, recent practice, where the union is actually coming and speaking at the meetings. I would think you might want to discontinue that practice, all right? We should be speaking from, to management as to why they're putting this appropriation forward to us. That is where you're kind of getting it, coloring outside the lines. I, as well as the other finance members, are simply explaining in open session why the city and taxpayers cannot afford and why we should not approve this appropriation. The third thing I'll point out is, we have rules under Ordinance 2-61 at Sections B and C that specifically also require a three-year financial analysis to be provided to all counselors for these contracts. I'm just pointing that out, that no three-year financial analysis was also provided for this negotiation. So I did want to just point that out, since we're talking about how the council is supposed to be judging the appropriations. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Ezra Rivera for the first time.
Thank you. I think one thing, I'm getting a little confused real quick with regards to Counselor Jordan mentioning something being a state statute of what we can't do, and I'm not sure if the city solicitor office kind of clarified that, or if they're saying the same thing in different languages. So can we suspend the rules and kind of get a clarification from the attorneys from the citizens' office to speak to kind of what Counselor Jordan is referring to around not being able to spend fiscal money from a previous year?
Sure. There's a motion to suspend the rules.
Yes.
Who allows the Law Department to speak. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Attorney Bessonette, did you want to respond?
Sure, I'll just go over what I had mentioned before, and I was able to check when I was offline here. It is Chapter 44, Kevin, but it is Section 68, appropriately entitled, "Retroactive Salary Increases." Whenever a city votes to grant a salary increase to all or any of its employees, such increase may be retroactive to a date not earlier than the beginning of the fiscal year prior to the date of such a vote. So if we were to vote today for that salary increase, that would be the demarcation point, and we'd go back to the fiscal year prior to this fiscal year, which would be last year, which allows retroactivity. Frankly, not my first day at the rodeo, not my first public employment contract, this is standard fare, this is nothing unusual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I just needed the clarification on that, thank you.
Anything else, Counselor? Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I guess we'll have to have another statutory construction, because that is not saying what he thinks it's saying. It's saying 7-124, it's the start of the fiscal year prior to the date of the vote, not to the prior fiscal year. So I think they should talk to Russ Dupre, and I think they should talk to the DOR and get guidance, because that's not what Mr. Bessonette thinks it says. That's my opinion. Thank you.
On the motion. So, the motion was to accept the committee report, so if you vote yes, you are voting to accept the committee's report to deny this transfer.
Motion on the first reading? Do we, I would assume we have to do the two readings, right, Madam President?
Sure, that just wasn't the motion that you had made, so I was just taking the lead from, from you. So the motion was to pass the first reading, and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Uh, motion to pass the second reading, and so if you, yes, Counselor?
If I may, just, just so we're clear, it's accepting the committee report, which is now at second reading, which would be to deny, so a yes vote, just, just so, I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
That's exactly what I was, what I just said, like 30 seconds ago.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. So if you vote yes, you are voting to accept the committee's report to deny this transfer. The clerk will call the roll. Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGraw-Smith?
No.
Murphy-Rembly?
No.
Licasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Givner?
No.
68, 78.
Motion to send it back to finance, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
You need a motion to reconsider, right?
Yes.
Sure, sure, I will, yes, okay. Is there a motion to reconsider?
Motion to reconsider.
You guys are so picky about sometimes, and then sometimes you're cool with it, so I just can't keep up.
But seriously.
No, it's okay, all right. So we had a motion to reconsider and a motion to send back to committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion to send back to committee, please.
Well, we just, we just did that.
Oh, okay, fine, thank you.
And the ayes have it, so it's going to go back to committee.
Thank you.
I don't even get it changed. So the next bunch, there's a ton from our friends in the Public Safety Committee. Nope, I lied, wait, yeah, that was the next one. Okay, so would you like?
That we do abbreviated reading?
That's the first thing. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Counselor, do you have, you want to take things as a package?
Yes, my pleasure.
Make sure you're speaking into your microphone, thank you.
Sorry, Madam President. A motion to take items 22 through 45 as a package.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to read them very abbreviated.
Sorry.
That's all right. So 22 is that we address poorly unplowed alleyways. 23 is that the DPW and mayor locate public spaces for trash receptacles. 24 is that DPW fix paving on Race Street near Sergeant. 25 is that city invite medical professionals from Holyoke Medical Center to discuss pros and cons of marijuana usage. 26 is that the committee invite the chief and West Springfield police to discuss illegal drug ra, drag racing, not drug racing, drag racing. 27 is public safety review, the access road to Peck School on street parking recommendation. 28 is about the intersection at West Franklin and Linden crosswalk. The 29 is, wait, how far am I going to, sorry?
45.
Ooh, okay. 29 is to work with city engineer to mitigate traffic near Ridgewood and Summit intersection. 30 is that DPW work with the fire department related to blinking flashing lights for parking bans. 31 is that the city engineer explore feasibility of divider at the top of St. Vincent. 32 is that the forester provide a safety plan for maintenance of trees. 33 is the engineer do a, do not block, block the box at 56 Jackson Street. 34 is that we evaluate the traffic problems, track, truck profit, truck traffic problems on Homestead Ave. 35 is that the police chief provide reports for a second, oh, the second most recent accident involving the mayor's vehicle, flashback. 36 is that there be a traffic study for Hampden Street. 37 is that a youth task force be established. 38 is that the police department provide an update on the traffic at night with truck drivers on Homestead. 39 is that we install lane delineators near the mall. 40 is that DPW add a crosswalk to Lower Westfield Road at Ingleside. 41 is that DPW review maintenance issues at the senior center. 42 is that the council works with tapestry for creating safe injection sites. 43 is the, we create pathways for community ownership of property. And 44 is that the city revisit existing traffic light projects and consider rotaries. And 45 is that the Board of Health cover what laws exist to protect property owners from damage of overgrowth of trees. All of these orders were recommended that the order be given a leave to withdraw. Counselor Rivera, yet, component of honor? Can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, with the permission of the chair, would it be appropriate that if any counselor has any issue with any of these orders, that they take that order out and speak to it? Otherwise, could we just vote as a package?
I think that's the plan.
You're here.
Great. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Madam President, and that wasn't too bad.
No, it was great.
Okay, so items 22 through 35, through 45, all of which have been recommended leave to withdraw. It is worth noting that some items have remained in the jacket for an extended period of time. In contrast, other have been, others have been advised for leave to withdraw by counselors Bartley, Givner, Jordan, and Bacon. The committee appreciates your guidance and the thoughtfulness consideration given to these matters. So all of them have been leave to withdraw. If anybody wants to refile them, you could go right ahead and refile them.
Anyone else? Counselor Graney?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
All right, so on the motion, given leave to withdraw, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to take items 46 through 56 as a package.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take items 46 through 56 together as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will do an abridged version. 46 is that the police chief provide an updated list of all tickets. 47 is that our engineer evaluate Whiting Farms Road, Farnham and Tokoniki intersections to see if a traffic light is warranted. 48 is that DPW install crosswalk on Cabot Street in front of Capri. 49 is that the city engineer evaluate Sullivan School for possible crosswalk. 50 is that police provide an update on traffic citations. 51 is petition award five residents for a crosswalk on Kane Road. 52 is that the Board of Health, Community Development, and Mayor survey City Hall in the annex for improvements. 53 is that the sidewalk in front of 211 West Franklin Street be repaired. 54 is that the permanent sign indicating traffic light ahead be placed before curve on Westfield Road. 55 is a communication about Bray Park Drive. 56 is, 56, sorry, I just lost my word line a minute, to request the MVD to come to City Council for handicap signs. 57?
Nope, 56.
56, my bad. Sorry, I lost where I was. It's on a roll. Counselor, all of these have been recommended, that the order's been complied with. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Madam President. Items 46 through 56 have all been complied with. We received confirmation emails from counselors Jordan and Bacon regarding their orders, and counselors Bartley and Givner, who were in attendance, also advised the committee their orders had been complied with. So 46 through 56 all have been complied with.
Is there any other updates? Okay, on the motion?
Oh.
Oh, is that you? No, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to package items 57 through 67.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take items 57 through 67 together as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So 57 is that the city engineer and HPD study traffic enforcement on North Hampton Street between Beach and West Franklin. 58 is that the city engineer provide feedback about the intersection of Linden, Anderson, and McKenzie. 59 is that the city engineer investigate safety measures for the intersection of West Franklin and St. Jerome. 60 is security cameras installed at Rowan Park. 61 is that the police station a car on McKenzie Road near Portland and McKenzie. 62 is to, wait, 62 is that the city engineer put Willow Street in the traffic study list. 63 is that the enforce citywide stop sign ordinances and police at Brown Ave and Laurel Street. 64 is that the engineer address the tree obstructing the stop sign at the intersection of St. Jerome and West Franklin. 65 is that DPW look into traffic calming measures at Sergeant and St. Jerome. 66 is that the HPD discuss patrolling of West Franklin Street. And 67 is that HPD patrol Florence Ave. These are all recommended that the order be referred to the police department and Sergeant Zerhide for use of traffic enforcement grant. Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Thank you, Madam President, and again, items 57 through 67, I would just echo what Madam President said, was all have been recommended to be referred to the police department, specifically to Sergeant Zerhide for the use with the traffic enforcement grant.
And, thank you, Counselor. I saw Counselor Devine's hand.
One, I'd like to compliment Counselor Jenny Rivera, she did a great job clearing up a lot of the jacket, and I did see Sergeant Zerhide today at the chief's swearing in, and he's aware of all these orders.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, on the motion to refer to the police department for use with the traffic enforcement grant, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Madam President? Motion to take, take up items 68 through 71 as a package?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take items 68 through 70, sorry, 70?
One.
One, as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor, oh, let me just do that real quick. Counselor, oh, let me just do that real quick. Sixty-eight is that the city engineer install two raised crosswalks on Samoset, Samoset, Samoset?
Samoset.
Samoset.
I'm dying up here. Uh, sixty-nine is that the city accepts Lynn Ann Drive and Richard Eager Drive as public ways. Seventy is that the crosswalks be installed from the parking lot on the canal serving businesses between Water and Appleton Street. And seventy-one is that the update, that we update graffiti ordinances to transfer law enforcement responsibilities onto the Police Department instead of property owners. All of these orders are recommended that they are referred to the Ordnance Committee. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Madam President. And item sixty-eight through seventy-one all need further consideration. So this was all referred over to the Ordnance Committee.
Madam President?
Counselor Devine?
A friendly amendment for myself and Counselor Bartley that we add Ogden Street to those two?
To which two?
The Lynn Ann Drive and Richard Eager Drive. I'm sorry.
Number sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine.
To item sixty-nine, so a motion to add Ogden Street to item sixty-nine. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon?
Just as a point of information, in order to get streets accepted as public ways, the residents have to submit a petition. It comes into ordinance, ordinance sends it to the Board of Public Works.
Okay.
Just FYI.
Okay, that's, I think it's in your ward.
No, it's Ward three. Or three.
Okay, then you can take care of that.
I'll take care of it. You got it.
Okay. So to send, anyone else? Comments or questions to send to Ordnance Committee? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to take items seventy-two through seventy-four as a package?
Motion's been made and seconded to take items seventy-two through seventy-four as a package. All those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? So item seventy-two was from residents of Norwood Terrace for improvements to the east sidewalks on the dead end portion of the street. Seventy-three was to create a rental registration requiring rental units to register at the city. Seventy-four is that the city creates a public accessible landlord registry database. And all of these were recommended that the order be referred to the Law Department for opinion on legality. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Madam President. And once again, I'll just echo what you just said. Item seventy-two through seventy-four, refer to the Legal Department for their opinion on legality.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Madam President? Motion to take up items seventy-five through seventy-seven as a package?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to take up items seventy-five through seventy-seven as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So seventy-five is that the city review and recommend three-way or four-way stop signs at all these intersections. Then there's a lot of intersections. And seventy-six is that the we create do not block the box signage at Beacon Street on Pleasant Street for safety. And seventy-seven is that DPW install flashing signal for the crosswalk at Cabot and South Summer Street. Recommended that these orders be referred to the DPW and city engineer. Is that right?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Bacon, do you have a question?
On number seventy-seven, I didn't catch this before. But does this mean to move the flashing crosswalk light at Homestead near McMahon School? From Homestead to another street?
So it says, yeah, good question. So recommended that the order be referred to the DPW to request sign be moved from Homestead to this location, or that a financial request be submitted to pay for the sign.
Okay, so I just want to go on record. This is a flashing crosswalk sign where they just took out the raised crosswalk because the engineer recommends that the flashing crosswalk signs are safer and better. So I'm totally opposed to that being moved. And I would appreciate if I could offer a friendly amendment to just scratch moving it from Homestead and go for the money. If I could get a second.
Second.
Okay, so the motion was made and seconded to amend item seventy-seven that it, to remove the part about removing the sign from, from Homestead for, uh, to, to that location. Under discussion?
Madam Chair.
Counselor Greeney?
Isn't that in close proximity to the McMahon School?
Yes. Okay.
It's a school. It's, it's, there's a school crossing there.
Right. Okay, so the...
Madam President?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor. Thank you. Counselor Jordan?
Yes, this was an order by Counselor Ocasio and I relative to trying to do something to make it safer for the residents to cross Cabot Street. There was a suggestion by one of our colleagues that perhaps the signs on Homestead, if they were not needed anymore, could be moved over to Cabot Street. It was determined by DPW that that, we could not do that. So I support what Counselor Bacon is suggesting because those are still needed on Homestead. So I have requested, along with Counselor Ocasio, to Carl that he appropriate or request of the mayor the fifteen hundred dollars needed to provide the flashing sign on Cabot Street at South Summer. So I'm hoping that he was open to that, but he has to get the money first. And then I asked him, you know, if the mayor would approve that, please send it to council and we will vote to give you the fifteen hundred dollars. So that's where it stands. So making the amendment is fine. And we're hopeful that we will get the fifteen hundred dollar request before the council soon and that we can vote that in because that's a very busy street and we'd like to protect the pedestrians.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Anderson Burgos and then Counselor Devine.
I just wanted to point out that orders seventy-five through seventy-seven have slightly different recommendations if you look at them carefully. Just wanted to note that.
Yeah, I was kind of getting that vibe afterwards. Counselor Devine, you had your hand up?
Yeah, we were just trying to help out Counselor Ocasio and Counselor Jordan. We thought maybe because they had taken out the raised crosswalk, they weren't going to use it.
We can't hear.
Oh.
Yeah, speak into the microphone.
Sorry. We were just trying to help out Counselor Jordan and Counselor Ocasio. And we thought because they, they took down those raised crosswalks, that we might be able to do this, but we can't. So it was just an effort on our part to try to help out the problem that Counselor Ocasio has down on Cabot Street in South Summer.
So on the amended motion that this is referred to DPW, and we'll just take out that part about moving the Homestead location, then all three of these are being referred to DPW and/or the engineer. Counselor Rivera, was that a handout? You good? Okay, sorry. Okay, on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. What do we got here?
Item seventy-eight. No more packaging.
Okay, so we're just doing seventy-eight. Okay. Item seventy-eight, hold on. Item seventy-eight is that the DPW and the Sewer Commission do a study and consider adopting a sewer maintenance insurance program for homeowners. Recommended that the order be referred to the Board of Public Works. Counselor Rivera?
So item seventy-eight, all I did, all I put down was for it to be referred over to the Board of Public Works for further consideration.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seventy-nine is from public safety that the Hoyoke City Council declare that housing is a human right. And it's recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Madam President. And once again, I was trying to keep it short and sweet, keeping mindful of the time. So just recommended that item seventy-nine be adopted.
Second.
Is there anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item eighty is public safety. That temporary speed humps be placed on Taylor Street to be followed by permanent speed humps for resident safety. Recommended that the order be referred to City Council for confirmation from City Clerk of required signatures. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Madam President. And this one was just strictly that, we just want to make sure with the City Clerk that all signatures on the petition were from, verified that they were all from the homeowners and not tenants. Some did.
I have them here if you need them. There's a check mark because these are copies, but there is a check mark next to them. Yeah. The checks next to them mean that we certified them. They were done. Yep.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I raised that question at committee, just to the Chair Tavrena. Because Taylor Street is a very long street. And I didn't see at the bottom of the, that they meant the percentage for the two-thirds of the homeowners on there. So I, I just want to get that clear.
I think it's supposed to be the homeowners or the registered voters.
Yes.
I'll have to look.
We amended that.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just have to pull the amount of registered voters on Taylor Street.
I don't care. I just want to get a confirmation on it.
No, I can look into it.
Thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
If I can. So it is a long street, but if I remember from doing them in the past, you need the signatures within X feet of where the speed humps would go. So it doesn't have to be everybody on the street, but it has to be within the, I think it's three hundred feet. But they have to estimate where they would go. So you probably have to get more than an exact amount, but not a whole long street if it's safe.
I can look back at the one we did for Bemis Road because Bemis is a similar, I mean, Bemis is even longer, but I'm...
But I think they wanted like three on Bemis, right?
Yeah.
So anyway, but that's just some of the technicalities.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? So this is being referred back to us for confirmation from City Clerk and then? And then it goes to, like?
I would just motion table it right now, just confirm.
Okay, all right. So...
The petition.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. The petition could be sent over to ordinance. It doesn't matter if it's in committee, getting the signatures verified.
Okay. All right, so...
Do you want to refer to ordinance?
Yeah, why not?
So, okay.
I'm old, so I'm old.
So the motion is to refer to ordinance and await City Clerk's confirmation of required signatures. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Eighty-one is public safety, that the Police Department explore costs and new funding avenues so the department can invest in body cams. Recommended that the order be referred to police and the mayor. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Madam President. And this is just, again, refer to the Hoyoke Police Department and the mayor so they could give us further consideration on this item.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, so we have, thank you, Public Safety Committee and everyone. Now we have motions, orders, and resolutions. As a reminder, if we're not voting on it tonight, we don't need to discuss it. Can refer it to committee. So eighty-two is filed by Counselor Bartley that the City Council issue a proclamation to honor the passing of Harry Chandler, U.S. Navy veteran and Pearl Harbor hero who died December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, age one oh three. Harry is a Hoyoke native. The, is that good? Okay. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, just, just a motion would be to just receive and adopt.
Second.
Motion to receive and adopt, under discussion?
Yeah, so Counselor Devine put together a beautiful calligraphy for on the resolution. And so she also provided an obit from Mass Live. And where the decedent Pearl Harbor veteran is going to be interred, I think, in Agawam. And so I'll, I'll bring this to, I'll bring this to Agawam Veterans Cemetery probably Thursday. And it'll be in behalf of Tessa Murphy-Von Valetti, Brenna Murphy-Larry, and, and all the city councilors, okay?
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Counselor Bartley, and thank you, Counselor Devine, as always, for the calligraphy. Item eighty-three, filed by Counselor Bartley that the Board of Public Works post its meeting minutes immediately and forward approved minutes to the City Council's Administrative Assistant as soon as possible so they may be reviewed by elected members. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, the, the motion is to receive and adopt and refer to the Board of Public Works?
Second.
Under discussion?
Sure. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to the Board of Public Works. Counselor Bartley?
This isn't the only board, Madam President, that where there's no minutes posted. I mean, the Planning Board comes right to mind. We've already asked them. And they're, they're not up online. It's unbelievable. So we have now the Board of Public Works, but the Board of Public Works are going back to twenty-twenty-one. How is this possible? There are no approved minutes uploaded. This is, this is shameful. Now, I get letters written about me, about a comment sent to this body. But we don't, we focus on writing, a letter-writing campaign approved by all three, or two, at least all, two of them anyhow, and, and the superintendent. But, but they can't get their minutes up online? So I did file pursuant to whatever the Mass General was, I didn't bother putting it in here. They have ten days to respond to me. Carl has not responded, Ms. Monahan has not responded, and neither of the other commissioners have responded to me. So, and, and it's not just me complaining about it, Madam Chair, Madam President. There, there are plenty of people that need the services of the Board of Public Works to, to do business with the city, the Planning Board, to do business with the city, et cetera. And yet it, it doesn't happen. I mean, it's a, it's a... I, I think it's, I don't know. I, I mean, I think it's a violation of the main law, but it doesn't matter what I think. I just want the minutes posted, and I really wish they would come back to us with a, with a, with just, I'm up there, just with a letter saying they're up.
Sure.
Sincerely yours.
Thank you.
And if somebody would follow up on that.
I can, I'll reach out to Jeffrey. I can reach out. Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, so receive and send to Board of Public Works. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eighty-four is filed by counselors Devine and Givner. I almost combined your two last names. Order that all collected, collective bargaining agreements or memorandum of understanding or agreement that are sent to City Council for passage be redlined only to those items pertaining to appropriations and that no other subjects be entertained or redlined except appropriations. Where would you like that sent?
I'm not sure where it should go. Law Department, ordinance? I'm not sure where the redlining came from because that was before I came back on the board.
Okay, I see Counselor Jordan and then Counselor Bacon?
Yeah, a friendly suggestion that it go to ordinance. This would require an ordinance change. Ordinance two dash sixty-one currently has the rule that we receive a full redlined agreement of changes. If we're going to modify that, we would have to modify the ordinance.
Okay, so send to ordinance, but Counselor Bacon?
Yes, I just simply wanted as a point of information to note that the redlining is showing us the changes in the contract. And as a matter of public transparency, if we're voting on appropriations, we need to know all the changes because they affect the, the cost of the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like it'll be a good conversation. Sounds like it'll be a good conversation in ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Eighty-five is filed by Counselor Devine, uh, ordered that Rule nine P be amended to remove the reference to items being tabled if they are not taken up in forty-five days. Charter and rules?
Sure.
Charter and rules.
Uh-
Second.
All those in favor?
That should say forty-five business days.
Okay. Forty-five business days. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, item eighty-six is filed by Counselor Devine, um, a transfer request of six thousand dollars, eight, six thousand eight hundred six dollars and sixty-four cents, um, from captain and lieutenants to injured on duty, and, um-
Make a motion that we-
This is, represents two firefighters, is my notes.
Make a motion that we pass that tonight?
Uh, well, we need, uh, motion to, so that was a motion to suspend the rules to take final action tonight, um, and perhaps-
Suspend. Sure. Take up eighty-seven.
Uh, so motion was made and seconded to suspend the rules and take up items six, eighty-six and eighty-seven. Both are transfer requests. First ones for six thousand eight hundred six dollars and sixty-four cents, um, injured on duty. The second one is, uh, six thousand eight hundred dollars and six cent, or, I'm sorry, six thousand eight hundred six dollars and sixty-four cents, um, which also represents two firefighters. Um, is there a motion to pass the first reading?
Motion to pass the first reading, sorry.
Um, motions were made and seconded to pass the first reading. Is there any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion, uh, to pass the second reading. Um, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting, um, in favor of these two transfers, eighty-six and eighty-seven.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy-Von Valetti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
That you've passed. Eighty-eight?
Um, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, and ninety sent to finance, and ninety-one, ninety-two.
Yeah, okay. Eighty, eighty-eight through ninety-two, is there, uh, there is a motion, is that a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, please.
Or take as a package? Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eighty-eight is a transfer for ten thousand five hundred dollars. Um, eighty-nine is a transfer for fifteen thousand dollars. Ninety is to accept a grant, um, from the Department of Public Health. Um, ninety-one is to accept the Shannon Community, uh, Safety Initiative Grant, and ninety-two is to accept the Commonwealth Project Safe Neighborhoods Initiative Grant, refer to finance?
Yes, and I believe our next meeting is going to be the fourteenth of January.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item ninety-three, filed by Counselor Jordan, uh, ordered that the, uh, mayor, law department, auditor, please enforce Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-eight. Um, I, do you want me to read all this?
No, suspend the rest of the reading.
Okay, thank you. Um, and-
I think, based on our prior discussion, I'm willing to just have, uh, receive, adopt, and refer it over to the law department alone for now, and let them, um, give, give Attorney Bissonette, uh, you know, and myself, maybe some more time to just talk it through together.
Okay.
Second.
So motion was to receive, adopt, and refer to law department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, ninety-four was filed by Counselor Jordan, um, that the DPW and City Engineer fix the city street in front of the driveways on one eighty-eight Sergeant and three oh seven Linden Street. Um, refer to DPW, Counselor? What would you like?
Yes, please, uh, Madam President. If we could receive, adopt, and send this to the DPW, this is a repeat request. I, I'm hoping that they'll, please do this. It's, it's not a big ask.
Receive, adopt, and send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ninety-five is filed by Counselor Jordan, ordered that the forestry department remove the dead tree in the tree belt in front of two fifty-one Walnut Street.
Sent to the DPW?
Refer to DPW, Counselor?
Yes, receive, adopt, and send to DPW.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ninety-six is filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, ordered-
Done.
Oh, sorry, we did that. Um, ninety-seven is filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, that the mayor, engineer, and DPW director update the council on the status of completing North Hampton Street between Lincoln and the Mount Tom Access Road. Um, would you like to?
I'd like to go to Public Safety.
So I think that it probably makes sense for this to go to Public Safety.
Second.
Okay. Uh, send to Public Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, ninety-eight is filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, that Hampden Street streetscape improvements from Waldo Street to Nonotuck Street are made based on recommendations of the City Engineer, with necessary changes made in ordinance.
Ordinance.
Send to ordinance?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, ninety-nine is filed by myself, um, ordered that the three salary reports for calendar year twenty-twenty-four be provided to the city council as an update, um, to the city website, or just receive-
Receive, adopt, and refer to Jeffrey?
Receive, adopt, and refer to Jeffrey? Um, all those in favor?
The treasurer.
Oh, what was that?
It would be the city treasurer.
Oh, the, oh, receive, adopt-
The treasurer?
To the treasurer.
Okay.
Um, okay, thank you, Jeffrey, that makes sense. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, item a hundred, if we could take a hundred and a hundred one-
Motion-
As a package.
To suspend rules, take them as a package.
Hundred and a hundred and one?
Um, motions were made and seconded to take a hundred and a hundred one together as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A hundred is, um, identifying the voting precincts, um, for the special election held on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. And one oh one is, uh, that the special election, um, is hereby called to be held on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth. Polls will be open at seven and close at eight P.M. Um, receive and send to clerk, or Counselor Bacon? Just receive and adopt?
Receive and adopt.
Under discussion? Counselor, uh, Bacon?
Thanks. Um, I just also wanted to add that, um, our clerk has made us aware that people can apply for a mail-in ballot-
Correct.
For this election.
Thank you, Counselor.
If they wish.
Thank you. Um, motion to receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item one oh two is filed by counselors Bacon, Jordan, uh, Greeney, and Bartley, uh, that once free cash is certified, we request any transfers out of general stabilization approved in December twenty-twenty-four, please be deposited back into the general stabilization account. Uh, refer to the mayor and treasurer?
Second.
Yes, and-
Under discussion? Counselor Bacon?
I would just note that we're also requesting from the treasurer that we get an update and a projected timeline as to when the free cash will be able to be certified, when their accounts are reconciled. We're looking for that, hopefully, by our next meeting. The auditor's waiting for reconciliations.
Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I should just saw, now, does, does the chair, is the chair aware of where the ARPA money was reprogrammed?
I have not been notified. Would you like me to reach out?
Well, yeah, would you mind?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to make it, I was going to amend the order, but don't bother, just-
Yeah, I can reach out.
Yeah, that's perfect, thank you.
Um, anyone else? Okay, um, so refer to the mayor and the treasurer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One oh three is filed by counselors Bacon and Jordan.
Done.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Uh, we do have some late files, just briefly.
All right.
Um, one oh four is, uh, from Mayor Joshua Garcia about the press release on Thursday. Um, receive?
Received, received.
And that's at twelve-thirty, I believe?
Twelve-thirty on Thursday at Hoyok Media.
Hoyok Media.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And item one oh five is filed by Counselor Givner, um, in order to declare property surplus, um, authorizing a sale of twenty-five thousand. Refer to DGR?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Madam President?
Uh, yes, Counselor Givner?
Yeah, um, that already came out of DGR. I think there's just a, a change of the, um, how they want it sold, so previously it was to a person, and now they want to put it in a trust, but we already voted that out, um, to DGR. So does it have to go back because of this change?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we suspend necessary rules to take final action on this item, to amend the owner.
Second.
Motion is made to sec- uh, suspend the rules and take final action tonight to amend the prior vote, uh, the, the owner?
Right, the wording is that it be amended to reflect that the purchaser will be the Jessica A. Chardier trustee of the J.A.C. Realty Trust rather than a, an individual.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other discussion, since this was discussed in committee prior? Is there any other discussion? Okay, so, um, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, if you vote yes, you are voting to approve the change, um, in the, uh, language for the sale that's already been approved.
Greeney?
How are you going to vote?
Greeney.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy-Von Valetti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
But that, you've passed it? That was it?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the efficiency tonight.
Good night and happy new year.
Good night.